Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City School Board meeting. We would now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, you may be seated. Good evening to all. We'll now entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Dr. Gilbert, good evening.
Good evening.
Communication.
Our first communication, I'm going to actually turn over to Collier Smith, who is your liaison with the City Schools Foundation. She has an exciting announcement to make, I think.
I actually insisted to make this announcement. This year, each year, the City Schools Foundation has hosted the Excellence in Education Celebration, and each year we honor a special person who has done a lot of work for education and community. And the school board knows this person very well. It's Dr. Susan Andrews will be honored this year. So I wanted to share that with you. It would be February 1st, and new trustee Minerva Smith is going to be the chair for the event, so we're all very excited. So thank you for letting me share that.
Sure. No, that's exciting. Thank you so much, and certainly well deserved. Thank you. I would like to ask for Don Barch and for Xavier Hamler to please come to the podium, and I'd like to introduce them to you and to the public at this time. Don, as you know, has been the Assistant Principal at Scales, and Xavier has been the Assistant Principal at John Pittard. So we have a few Assistant Principals to hire, but I'm delighted that Don has agreed to be the Principal at Scales, and Xavier will be the new ESP Director. And I'd like, Don, would you please tell us a little bit about your vision for Scales and why you wanted to be the Principal?
Well, taking over for Ms. Stevens, as she has taken another job, is kind of like replacing Peyton Manning. And I don't know that I necessarily want to follow that up, but on the way over here I thought I get to use Peyton Manning's team, and that's the team that's in place. So I'm excited about that, and looking forward to working with his teachers and the parents and the students. And we've got a great foundation, and we're gonna, you know, focus in on some instruction and use the team data from the teacher evaluation and the testing data and just really, really see what we can do to help those students out and help those students learn. And I'm really excited with the teachers that I've got. We're gonna have a lot of new positions, a lot of changes at Scales. Totally new administration, even though I was there, it's still in a different role, and I'm excited and can't wait to get going and have been working very hard ever since it was formally announced yesterday, and looking forward to the next several days and the next several years.
Thank you, Don. I have to tell you that the teachers were extremely excited about it, and I've sensed the round of applause that lasted for several minutes. I've gotten several emails saying that that was a very wise choice, so I appreciate that very much.
Thank you. Good opportunity.
The same thing happened with Xavier. He is interested in the ESP job, has done ESP before, did an excellent job at Case and Lane as the Site Director there, had a lot of energy, a lot of enrichments going on at that school, and that's what we're looking for now. But I will tell you, Xavier, that after they heard the announcement that I've had several folks that have written and talked about how excited they were, and even had one of the central office staff said that she had run into a couple of teachers late yesterday afternoon, and they were also very excited about it. So I'd like for you to share with the board your vision of ESP, if you would.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert, for giving me this opportunity to be the new ESP Supervisor. As a former Site Director, I understand the importance, what it takes to have a positive, enriching activity plans for students after school as well as during break time, and I look forward to being the new Supervisor of ESP. So I'm very excited about that. I'm sad to leave John Pittard, but I'm excited about the new, the next chapter in my educational career.
And I think Roseanne would say that too, she wrote me, and she said, "It was a great choice," but I hate to lose him. So thank you too for the work that you're going to do and for the work that you have done for children. Really appreciate it, and welcome, welcome to your new positions. Barch referred to Katrine Stevens, and I'd like to announce that she's still part of Murfreesboro City, at least right now, but she has been chosen as one of the Principal Coaches for Tennessee, so she will be working with Principals across Tennessee as implementation of the Common Core occurs. We'd also like to congratulate Stacy Burke, this has been announced in the paper, but I don't think we've officially done it here in a board sitting. She is a sixth grade teacher at Discovery School. She is a finalist for the Tennessee Teacher of the Year, and the next process will be that she will have an interview, but I think she certainly has a great chance of becoming the State Teacher of the Year, and for her to be a finalist with as many schools as we have in Tennessee is really, says something about her quality of teaching and her quality as a person also. So we congratulate her. Mitchell Nelson Schools would like to thank Bob Parks Realty for their constant support this year, and most recently, they have donated $2,145 for the purchase of a CPS Student Response System. These are the clickers that you use when you're asking questions, and the students can immediately respond and see their responses. And then also, we would like to thank United Way. We will be receiving $15,000 from United Way for the Franklin Heights Homework Tutoring Program. As you know, we have about 70 students that are at Franklin Heights every day and receiving tutoring, and we're very excited about that, being able to continue this next year, and that's something, as a matter of fact, Mr. Wiles will be working on the next couple of months. So those are your communications.
Thank you. Consent items. We'll entertain a motion for the approval of our consent items.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Action items, Ms. Baker.
Okay, now you have before you a number of different policies that were approved on first reading at the special meeting two weeks ago, and they are now before you for second and final reading. The first policy you have is SS-9, Child Nutrition Management. The change to this policy was on line 47, adding that there are five food component groups required by the federal government now, and students must now take a minimum of three items. One of the three must include either a fruit or a vegetable. That is a federal requirement that was added to this policy.
Were there any questions or any comments from Ms. Baker before we ask for a vote for the approval? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion for the approval.
So moved.
Seconded.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the next policy that you have before you is Policy IS-12, Grading System. This policy is a revised policy that Ms. Hawkins has worked on, and if you have any questions, we'll be glad to entertain those.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Hawkins? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion for the approval.
So moved.
Seconded.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next policy that you have before you is Board Policy STU-10, Student Safety. This policy has been slightly revised to include some more description about who is responsible for maintaining, overseeing the safety in the schools, and that would be the Principals with assistance of central office staff. And also, there has been an addition in line 15 to be sure that all teachers and students should observe safe practices on the playground and school grounds as well as inside the school. That was the addition made there. And also, an addition was made on line 24, that the Principal shall notify the police if circumstances indicate if there are strangers loitering around the school.
Are there any questions for Ms. Baker? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion for the approval.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next policy that you have before you is Board Policy STU-20, that's Procedural Due Process. This is a policy that has been revised to just give a little bit more detail about the steps that take place if a student has been disciplined, where they have been suspended for 10 days or more, or expelled from school. It spells out in more detail the due process rights the student has based on state statutes and case law. And those additions were found, you can find in lines 10 through 22. Are there any questions regarding this policy?
Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion for the approval.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next Board Policy that you have before you is Board Policy STU-21. It deals with interrogations and searches of students. This policy is drawn, is slightly revised from the current policy. It is based on Tennessee statutes regarding interrogation and searches of students by school personnel and the police. The minor changes that were included were just to clarify that if law enforcement or the Department of Children's Services requires the Principal not to be present during an interview of a student, then they must honor that request of law enforcement or the Department of Children's Services. Failure to honor that request could be considered obstruction of justice. So that addition was made, added to this policy. Are there any questions or comments?
Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next Board Policy that you have before you is Board Policy STU-31, Communicable Diseases. And this policy just has some slight revisions that just help clarify some of the language in the policy. One of the items that helps clarify language is found in lines 12 through 13. It clarifies that if the student is confirmed to have a long-term communicable disease, the Principal may refer the student for special education services or 504 accommodations, depending on which type of service is appropriate to the child's situation.
Any questions for Ms. Baker? Hearing none, we'll entertain a-
I have a question. What's 504 accommodation?
504, if you're familiar with the Americans with Disabilities Act, 504 is the education world's version of that. There is a federal law that requires us to provide reasonable accommodations to an individual with a disability, and that, and it basically mimics the Americans with Disabilities Act, but it's in an educational setting. When you are receiving federal funding, you must follow the guidelines of Title 504.
Thank you.
Mr. Campbell.
In line 11, "If the student is confirmed to have a long-term communicable disease, the Principal may refer a student for special ed services." I guess I'm trying to, well, I guess first I need to have a definition of communicable disease.
There is, the definitions would be found in the Department of Health laws and rules and regulations. There are definitions spelled out in those, those rules that would define the parameters of communicable disease. It could range anywhere from, and Dr. Brown may be able to help me out with this.
Tuberculosis would be an example of a long-term communicable disease.
If that's the case, how does that connect in with special education?
And see, it will depend on the type of disease the individual has. They would look, special education services would come into, come into play when someone has a disability that impacts their ability to learn, to receive a free, appropriate public education. So if it is some sort of a disease that's impacting their ability to learn, then it would fall under the special education laws. If it's not, if it's just a physical impairment, then it would fall under 504. That's why the language says, "if appropriate to the situation."
I was just trying to find the connection between the disease and special ed services, but I understand that. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion for the approval.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next policy that you have before you for revision is Board Policy STU-32. It deals with Acquired Immune Deficiency Syndrome, and this is a policy that again is based on some state statutes relative to this issue, and it has had some revisions and updates from the state statutes, and the main revisions to this policy are again to clarify that if a child is in this situation, the special education laws and the 504 accommodation laws would come into play when determining how to best provide this child with their education. And again, it depends on how severe their situation is. If their situation has become something that is impacting their ability to learn, then the special education laws would come into play. If it is a physical impairment, then it would fall under 504 accommodations.
Are there any questions for Ms. Baker on this policy? Hearing none.
Ms. R. New Year? I had corresponded with Mrs. Baker earlier. My concern is lines 18 and 19, that all matters pertaining to this student would be under the direct supervision of the Director of Schools. So in my mind, I'm thinking that it's extremely broad yet extremely restrictive, and I don't, I'm just not sure. That may be state statute, it may be how it has to read, but I'm thinking that if I were in the classroom and had a child, would I be able to act upon discipline? Would I be able to give grades? How would all that relate to Dr. Gilbert? Do I have to come to her for everything?
This, this is recommended language from the Tennessee School Board Association, and it's found in some of the state regulations. And if you notice that if that comes, becomes the case, if the student's parents or guardians choose to disclose the child's HIV status, then it has, the regulations have mandated that all matters pertaining to the student need to be under the direct supervision of the Director. And I think that's the language you should focus on, is direct supervision of the Director. So the Director needs to stay informed of what is going on with this child and needs, in order to make sure that it's being handled appropriately.
And that would be probably more health-related as opposed to the goings-on, the daily goings-on in the classroom, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Smith?
My question about that same one is that would it have a better meaning if it was just, if you removed the word "direct supervision," direct out of the "direct supervision," and just put "supervision"? Because the direct supervision means that she would be the sole officer of the system that would be working with the child, to me.
I do not have the regulations right in front of me. I would need to pull those and double-check before I delete the word "direct" and make sure that is not required under the regulations.
Are there any other questions or? We'll still ask for a motion pending Mrs. Baker to come back. If this is under state law, then it's gonna be tough to remove anything, but still we'll ask for a motion for the approval pending her getting back with us about whether or not she can remove the word. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the next policy that you have before you is Board Policy STU-34, Drug-Free Schools. I did make a number of revisions to this policy based on the policy that we had on the books, and I spelled out more information about guidelines set forth to help safeguard students and staff and to maintain a positive learning environment. These guidelines that I included, you'll see between line 12 through line 47, those deal, those came from a Tennessee School Board Association recommended policy, and they also are found in the state statutes that deal with drug-free schools. So I thought that it would be helpful to staff to include that information. It sets forth guidelines that schools are to follow to help maintain a positive learning environment.
Are there any questions for Ms. Baker on this particular policy? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion for the approval.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next policy that you have before you is STU-35, deals with tobacco-free schools. And at the last meeting, the Board had asked me to double-check state law to see if there was the possibility of making our school campuses completely tobacco-free, and we may do that. There is nothing restricting us from being able to do that. So if the Board chose to prohibit any tobacco products on school property, they could make that restriction.
Ms. Smith?
I'd like to move that our schools become tobacco-free.
Okay, are there any questions or Mr. Campbell?
Okay, Kenny, if we make the school tobacco-free, what far-reaching responsibility is this? Let's say that we've got a junior pro, and they're using our facility. Do those activities relate back to this policy, and it forbids it as well?
Yes, if we posted that the school property was a smoke-free environment, was a tobacco-free environment, then anyone that rented our facilities would have to honor our policies. Anytime they rent or utilize our facilities, we require them to comply with our policies and rules and all of our administrative directives, building rules. That's in the agreement they sign when they rent our facilities.
But if they're not renting our facility, grounds or building or otherwise, then that is not appropriate? Is that what you're telling me? The boys that go over in the afternoon and play baseball, or the men that play soccer, and we have that on our campus, or tennis.
Well, I guess I'm looking at the people that are using our school property for those organized events. They're supposed to be using them through the Murfreesboro Parks and Recreation Department, and we have agreements with those organizations that come onto the property and use them for practices and recreational activity through the Parks and Recreation Department. And that's what I was referring to, are those agreements require those organizations to agree to follow our policies.
Okay, so if it's not, if there's a group of seven or eight guys in the afternoon playing soccer on our grounds, this policy does not pertain to them, is that correct?
No, it would pertain to them.
It would pertain to them, even though they're not officially using our property with our permission.
We could tell them to stop using our property, period, but if we found smoke, you know, cigarette butts and other items in the property, we could tell them they can't use the property.
Okay.
If we posted it, no smoking, we can ask them to leave.
Ms. R. New Year?
My question would be, since you referred back to Parks and Rec Department, what is their policy? Do you know offhand?
They, I believe they do allow smoking on, in certain areas on park property, but I believe there are designated smoking areas. I not, I know at, say, the baseball parks and definitely at the swimming pool, there's no smoking anywhere at the swimming pool. So I, I know I've seen people smoking, I'm not sure if they're supposed to be. I would have to go back and look at it.
I know that also, and that's why I was just curious, wondering if we should mimic their policy. I don't know.
I want to say the city has taken a no-smoking stance, but I really need to double-check how the parks handle that. I'm not familiar with exactly what they've done relative to smoking, other than at very specific facilities. I know in the baseball parks, there's not supposed to be smoking. At the swimming pools, there's no smoking. Of course, in the buildings, there's no smoking, but say out in the middle of Barfield Park, I'm not sure how that's handled.
Okay.
There's a motion on the table for our building to become completely smoke-free, and I'm concerned about line two. Would you have to go in and make some adjustments?
Yes, line two reads that "All uses of tobacco and tobacco products, including smokeless tobacco, are prohibited in all of the school system's buildings and within 50 feet of the school building." So currently, we've allowed people to smoke 50 feet away from the building. So if the Board chose to make the campuses smoke-free, I would, or tobacco-free, I would need to delete the language "and within 50 feet of the school building." And I would also recommend changing buildings in there. I would need your clarification, if you mean buildings or the entire campus.
Smith?
I mean, the entire campus. It is not a good example for our children to be smoking a cigarette or using smoke-free tobacco. People can smell it, it's just we're teaching our children that it's bad, it's bad for their health, and we need to have an example.
As a pediatrician, I support that idea totally.
All right, Board. We've had a-
Do we have a second?
I'm ready to ask for that second. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? I'm gonna ask for questions before we go on and answer the vote. All righty. There are no questions? All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Are there any that oppose? Thank you. And Ms. Baker, I know you'll get this back to us. Thank you.
Okay, and the next policy that you have before you is Board Policy STU-27, Regarding Corporal Punishment. It just has been revised to clarify that corporal punishment shall not be used as a disciplinary measure in any school. The language that was deleted will be, you will be seeing soon in another policy that deals with restraint or isolation of children, and that would be found in a different policy.
Is there a motion or, no, is there questions for Ms. Baker on this one before we answer a motion? Hearing none, is there a motion for the approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
The next policy that you have before you is Board Policy PER-17. It deals with Evaluation of Professional Staff. This is the, this, this policy was not brought to you at the last policy meeting, but it has been slightly revised to add language at, and I'm sorry, I didn't have it highlighted. The language that has been added that we must, the Board needs to adopt pursuant to state law, you'll find in lines 44 through 47, that there is a state-recommended grievance procedure relative to the evaluations, and the Board has to instruct the Director to develop a procedure, which the state law actually sets out what the procedure must be, so there's, we'll have to set that out in an administrative directive. So that's the revision that you're seeing to this policy. The Board had previously worked on this policy on 10/11 of last year.
Any questions for Ms. Baker?
Question.
Mr. Campbell?
Line six, who are the licensed personnel not directly assigned to the principal in the building?
They may include your psychologists, some of those folks that you would have working there that are not, may not be directly assigned to them, but they would be evaluating them.
These would be people who are assigned from the central office? This would not be like, especially the teachers?
No, those folks that are directly assigned to principals, they're responsible for.
Are there any other questions about this policy? Here none, we'll entertain a motion for the approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
That is all the policies that I have for you tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Dr. Gilbert, we're still at number B.
Okay, you have approval of commodity budget amendment, and I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. Every year, the Food Service Program receives monies from the federal government through the use of the USDA Commodities Program. This year, every school district in the nation was notified that they had to start showing and identifying the amount of value of what the USDA commodities equaled. I think what they're trying to show is the amount of value that they put into the school nutrition programs around the country. The value that we received this current year that we're in is $186,605. They even gave us the budget codes to use to say it's a revenue that came in, and they gave us the expenditure code. This is in the school nutrition budget, it's not in your general purpose budget. It is money in, money out, there is no gain or loss for us, it's just identifying the amount of money in the program. We were told that we needed to have this budget amendment before our boards, before the end of June 30th, so that is why it's before you tonight.
Any questions for Ms. Anderson? Here none, we'll ask for the, a motion for the approval.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Report to the information, Dr. Gilbert.
At this time, I'm like for Mr. Greg Lyles, who is our coordinator of community outreach to come to the podium, and he has some folks that I think he's going to introduce, or at least he's going to talk to us about what's going on as far as community outreach in the camps.
Thank you. All right, thank you for this opportunity to talk to you a little bit about community outreach and what we have accomplished this year. Let me preface by saying that we are certainly fortunate as a school district to have a director that sees and stresses the importance of community partnerships. We could not do what we do for our kids in a lot of instances without the community partners that we have. And let me stress that we, those are civic and community groups, agencies, as well as faith-based partners that we have who do a tremendous job. One of the projects, just kind of highlighting some slides in the PowerPoint, this was a mural project that we just completed at Patterson Center with Dr. Deborah Siegler-Voyt of the Art Department. It's awesome. If you've not been there recently, you need to go by and see that those, she involved the Bradley students in that project as well, so it's the educational room there at Patterson Center. So they were excited about that. So that's just one example of partnerships that we have. Certainly, in our community resources, we look at the donation of time and resources that benefit our organization and most of all, benefit our children. This was a baseball camp that we had at MTSU back in the fall, I believe, and tremendous, tremendous attendance with our students and the athletic department at MTSU. Just again emphasizing the priority that we as a district place on community involvement and the input of our community in programming in our schools. Dr. Fowler there at Bradley with one of the shots here with the Reading Rocker Program that we did in conjunction with Cracker Barrel, and that's in three of our sites, I believe, in the city. One at Bradley, one at Bellwood, and one at Franklin Heights. We received the two double rockers and a barrel of books. Again, some shot of our director addressing our volunteers. We had a reception for some of our, for all our volunteers, and that's a shot there. Just showing our appreciation for what they do for us. Our community outreach team consists of Ruth Gonzalez-Hill, who works a great deal with our Hispanic population, she along with Mr. Espinoza and Mrs. Tapia, and then we have Candy Clifford, sorry, who is also a part of our outreach team. Again, some of the programs, Boys, the Men, that we've done this year, the breakaway camps that we had during our breaks, Club Neutron was going on at several of our sites this year. At Patterson, we had Club Neutron once a week, and then I think this summer, we had a Club Neutron camp at Black Fox for their students. We had a girls' camp, all-girls' camp, Ms. Wade was a part of that, and Dr. Gisard was our kickoff speaker. We had the vision of just doing an all-girls' camp, trying to instill in them a vision for the future. We had female role models to come in and talk to our girls about goal-setting, and we ended the program with a tea with our girls, and they got to dress up. We borrowed hats, some of the mini hats from my wife, and they really had a ball with that. We had a luncheon and a tea for them. Georgia Career Institute came in and did their nails and then the hair on the day before the tea, so it was really neat. That's a shot of some of our girls. Again, some of our volunteers, that's a shot of one of our retired educators from Murfreesboro City, or two of them, Becky Davis and Marjorie Jennings, one of the sessions that they did with our girls. Also, our community outreach involves a lot of parent education opportunities. Schools have parent coffees on a monthly basis. We do workshops, seminars. One of the big ones we did this past year was with Greenhouse Ministries. They did a five-week camp at three of our sites. They offered different classes each week for our parents, budgeting, food preparation. Really neat partnership there. GED classes, we work closely with the Rutherford County Adult Ed Department in offering GED classes to our parents. ELL classes, of course, we have the Mobile Health Unit. Another, one of our new partners this year is the Rutherford County Soil Conservation District, who gave us, I think we had two grants from them for garden projects. We have one community garden project going at Key United Methodist Church. They donated land, and we have six families from the inner city with their first experience in gardening, and that's neat. Just a list of some of our community partners. This is by no means a detailed list, but this, just, I want to stress a few of our partners here. Middle Tennessee Medical Center, Middle Tennessee State University, who we have a project with, we started this year, Club Marvel. We have inner-city kids who go once a month on campus on Saturday, and the different departments sponsors a program for our kids. I mean, we started in, back in October, I think, was our first program, and it was on aerospace. The kids got to experience the airport, the control tower simulator on campus. And then we just finished the last two sessions of Club Marvel, June 12th and the 14th. They went to the dairy farm out on Guy James Row, which was a neat experience. It's the cleanest dairy farm I've been to, but then also the department of, let's see, I can't remember, another department on MTSU, the Environmental Education Department did our final program on June, June the 14th. We partnered with the Murfreesboro Housing Authority, Murfreesboro Police Department, Murfreesboro Parks and Recs, Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue, and the list goes on and on and on. And again, we could not do what we do for our kids without many of these partnerships. And one of the programs we had this summer was Camp Prism. We've done for, I believe, the past three years with Dr. Rebecca Zilstra, and who's kind of helped us coordinate that project at Mitchell-Nelson for the last three years, and Kristy Lewis, who's one of the teacher leaders in that. And so I'm going to turn it over to them for a short overview of Camp Prism.
Thank you, Mr. Lyles. I am Kristy Lewis, and I teach at Mitchell-Nelson Elementary, and I am honored to have been a part of Camp Prism for the last three years at Mitchell-Nelson. I've had the honor of working with Dr. Callahan from MTSU and all the great and wonderful community resources that she brings into our program. Camp Prism is a two-week program that we offer to our students. We started out two, three years ago, offering it to about 25 students. This is our third year, and we upped our enrollment to about 50 students over the two weeks. We partner with MTSU. The kids got to go on campus and experience some college classes with some of the professors and students. We also visited the MTSU dairy farms, and as Mr. Lyles said, it was very clean, and I was very impressed to have been able to go and see what they have to offer out there as well. We got to attend Nissan and see how many of their cars and trucks are made, and all of that is thanks to Rebecca, who plans our whole two weeks and partners with all of the community resources and with MTSU. We hope to offer this camp again next year, maybe in the hopes of opening it up to district-wide. That's our ultimate goal, is to open it up district-wide. But I would like to share with you a video that we made at Camp Prism of some of the places the children were able to visit and some of their comments about what they liked about the camp, so I'd like to show that this time. Yes, go ahead.
I would like to say as the representative-
My favorite activity at MTSU was walking on water.
Go ahead.
I just want to say that as the representative of the MTSU part of this collaboration, that it is definitely a two-way collaboration, and I get to see the benefit to our MTSU students and the MTSU faculty and the opportunity to work with your students and your faculty. So it is appreciated.
My favorite activity was going to MTSU and making goo.
My favorite activity was when we went to the Nissan plant.
My favorite field trip was going to the MTSU gemology department. Mr. Krib taught me that gemologists don't really know what is under the earth's surface, and they have to make predictions.
My favorite part of Camp Prism was when we played in the creek and learned about the farm.
My favorite part of Camp Prism was going to the chemistry class at MTSU.
My favorite activity is when we played in the creek at the farm.
The thing I liked most about Camp Prism is when we got to do walk-on water, because it was really fun and squishy.
My favorite part of Camp Prism is when I had to do different activities.
My favorite part about Camp Prism was going to Nissan and watching them make cars, and going to MTSU and doing the experiments.
My favorite part of Camp Prism was going to different places and field trips.
My favorite part of Camp Prism today was going to the creek and seeing all the farms and different animals that they have.
What I really liked about Camp Prism is the goo, because it really felt cool to put my hands in.
My favorite thing of Camp Prism was the farmyard.
My favorite thing about Camp Prism was all the field trips.
My favorite thing about Camp Prism is that we get to go to lots of field trips, and we had lunch at MTSU.
My favorite thing about Camp Prism was visiting a chemistry class at MTSU.
My favorite part of Camp Prism was the hayride.
My favorite part about Camp Prism was walking on water.
My favorite activity in Camp Prism is going to the farm.
My favorite thing about Camp Prism is when we went to the hospital and saw the newborn baby pictures.
My favorite part of this week was the marble ramps.
My favorite thing was going to the hospital and see the newborn baby.
My favorite thing was to go see the mail.
My name is Traylee Timmons. My favorite thing we did this week is go to the hospital and watch the newborn babies.
One of my favorite things to do in Camp Prism is to make polygons, and I learned how to make isohedrons and dodecahedrons.
My favorite thing at Camp Prism was the marble ramps.
My favorite thing that we got so far is the hospital.
My favorite thing, we're making the 3D shapes and making the marble ramps.
My favorite activity was the marble ramps, and my favorite field trip was going to the hospital.
Favorite thing I did at Camp Prism was eat C.C.'s pizza and go to Spino.
My favorite thing about Camp Prism was visiting the MTSU Aerospace Department.
My favorite thing was marble ramp and making my own marker and going to C.C.'s pizza.
to be here tonight. But again, special thanks to Dr. Callahan for your leadership and your guidance. Some of the other camps we had going on in the district this summer. Scales had a camp, Shoot for the Moon, May 29th through June the 8th. We had a tech camp at Black Fox and Mitchell-Nelson during the month of June. Dr. Carissa Brooks had a reading clinic going on for the whole month of June at various sites throughout the district. Bradley had a reading camp that they did in conjunction with MTSU. Of course Franklin Heights had camps during this whole month of June. The Arts and Culture, Literacy Week, Math and Business Management Week were some of their emphasis. Then we did it, we're in the process, we completed one week, and we have another week to go with Tennessee Technology Center. Amazing math and science camp out there for those kids and what they're exposed to. Not only that, in, in looking at addressing the needs of the whole child, we had summer feeding sites throughout the district that are going on this summer. And ESP is continuing to provide students with backpack food for the weekend when, when there's a need. So we, we are having a great summer, and again, we are addressing the needs of children, and I, I think the children are being exposed to, to quite a bit in our community through our various camps.
I'd say thank you. There seem to be so many things right about Camp Prism. I like the lyrics to Who Says We Can't Be Best? The collaboration with MTSU, we need to be doing that all the time, which Dr. Gilbert is so good in promoting that. And then just take, I really, I love that you're taking advantage of the local industry and inspiring our students to do their very best, and let them have some wonderful goals. But thank y'all so much for doing that, for sharing all those beautiful faces in the video.
I have just as much fun as the kids do.
Dr. Brown?
I agree. These are great programs, and specifically, I would like to thank Dr. Callahan and everyone at MTSU. You're such a valuable part of our community. You interact in so many ways that make Murfreesboro and our schools better for everyone, so thank you.
We have one other report, and that is about our Common Core standards. As you know, Rebecca Few from John Pittard, and also Karen Cook from Discovery School, they have been doing a lot of studying about Common Core and what it's going to mean in the school district, and they will be working closely with their instruction team, with the principals, with the teachers on, ensuring that we do implement that and do gain from that as far as our student learning.
And tonight, I'm going to share a little bit about what the Common Core is, and then Karen's going to share what we've been doing as Common Core coaches. The Common Core is going to truly transform the way teachers are, are teaching math in our schools. It has been adopted by 46 states, and it's a set of standards written by parents, teachers, school administrators, and experts in the field of math education. The goal of the Common Core is to have all students college and career-ready by going deep into the practices of math. Currently educators in Tennessee are teaching over 100 standards, and they're teaching them a mile wide and an inch deep. And the Common Core is going to condense these standards into 25 areas of focus and allow students to closely and purposefully examine relationships between numbers. The instructional shifts associated with the Common Core for mathematics are focus, coherence, and rigor. And focus means we're going to focus where the standards are. Coherence means that educators will think across grade levels and link to major topics within grades. And then rigor is working with fluency, application, and a conceptual understanding of, of math. And we call that in the state, doing mathematics. And doing mathematics looks very different than sitting with a textbook and answering questions. Before I hand it over to Karen, I'm going to share just a brief story about a conceptual understanding of multiplication, so I can sort of give you an idea of what that looks like through the eyes of a child. My son came home early in May of last year and said, "Mom, Mom, did you know that multiplication is repeated addition?" And I said, "Well, yes, I did, Carter. Tell me more about that." He said, "Multiplication is repeated addition. Three times four is 12, because three groups of four is 12, because four plus four plus four is 12." And he said, "They're all related. They all mean the same thing." And I said, "Yes, you're exactly right." He was not memorizing multiplication tables. He had that conceptual understanding of, of multiplication. And with that, children can apply it to studying area and multiplying and dividing fractions, and examining relationships among numbers and algebraic expressions. And Carter was able to do that for two reasons. He had a fantastic Murfreesboro City school teacher who's already looking at math this way. And he had a textbook that we've adopted, thank you, that is talking the concept talk and talking that conceptual understanding, and can be used as a great resource for the Common Core. The Common Core will be partially implemented this year with a constructed response, given three times, and full implementation, full implementation will occur in 2014, 2015. Thank you.
As Rebecca said, that we started our training to address these Common Core shifts and changes as the state has, has progressed. We've got about 12,000 teachers, 12,000 to 13,000, I think, today, they updated that, that will be receiving this training this summer for over, from about 200 teachers across the state of Tennessee. So it's a big undertaking that the state has taken on, but they're really trying to do the professional development to the best of their abilities, and trying to train teachers so that teachers are training teachers, I think, or it will really pay off. I think that when you hear it from a fellow colleague, you buy into it, you accept it, and, and you see how this is going to really change the instruction that we give our children, and it's really going to make them career-ready, college-ready, you know, to get them ready for those things. Things that we have done, we started our training in April, and we actually went through the training that we'll be delivering in July, and I think that was paramount, because we had to understand what we were going to be going through ourselves. We really had to see it, feel it, work it, and, and kind of get in there and, and do things. What we focused on in our training in April were things called high-level tasks. And students are going to have a lot of disequilibrium about them in the beginning, and so will teachers, because these high-level tasks are not going to be things where they readily, two plus two is four. They're going to have to really dig deep and have some explore time, uncomfortable time, where maybe they don't know the answer, because it's not about finding the right answer, it's about the process, talking about math. The doing math is going to look very different. It is not going to be teacher-led, students sit there and, and hear a lecture. It's going to be in the floor with manipulatives, moving things, drawing things, and really relying on two parts. They're going to have to have the algorithm part of the mathematics, the equations, but they're also going to have to be able to back that up with a diagram that represents it, or the words to explain it, so that they, you get the why they're doing something. And students are also going to learn that it's not just a one, one solution. There are lots of ways that we can find the solutions to the same problem. And it's going to really, I think, differentiate that instruction for students and allow them to show what they know in a way that best suits them. So we have gone through that training, and we are about to embark upon three weeks in July where we go out and train these teachers. And, you know, we're really going to be moving teachers in a different direction. It will not be, I kind of like to call it, we're like the guide on the side. We're going to be presenting something, guiding them to an instructional, to the content standards set forth, but we're, it's going to be in a much different way. And it's exciting. It's going to be a lot of fun, I think, for, for teachers and students both. And this will just get us ready for those new Common Assessments that were going to be coming, coming around in 2014, 2015, when they, when our assessments nationally come around differently.
Are there any questions for Ms. Few or Ms. Cook? Thank you so much. Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Brown.
Just one comment. I certainly hope this program is successful, because I think what you've expressed that's key to the success of so many individuals, and is very key in industry, would be that of critical thinking. So many times, people can do something just because they've been told to do it that way, but if there's a slight change and they have to use those critical thinking skills, sometimes it's difficult. And if we can teach the students early on and all through their educational career to use those critical thinking skills, we're going to have a much better workforce in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Really appreciate the work that these ladies have done, and they're going to be busy the rest of the summer, and, and I'm sure that they will be working with us, because you're right, we're going to be having to work with our principals, with their, with our teachers, with administrators, to ensure that, that we can do exactly what you said, that we experience it first, and so that we have an understanding of it. So it's going to be a challenge, so thank you too for stepping up the plate and, and learning so much, so that we can learn so much. Really appreciate you. You have the personnel update. You also have on your, your table, more detail. In, in the personnel update that you received, you do have the people who have been hired, both the instructional personnel who have been hired, and also classified personnel. And then in the addendum that we have placed on your, in front of you, you have the report as far as the retirees, non-renewals, and, and resignations. If you have any questions about those, as far as being able to answer questions when it comes to personnel, I'll be happy to do that. Or if you would like to contact me after this meeting, that would be fine, too. Mr. Anderson, the monthly revenue and expenditure report, and also the attendance report, please.
Thank you. Your monthly revenue report, we're at 92% of the year. This is through the end of May. As you can see, the net income is $180,000 roughly. And the reason it, it drops drastically in this month is because the state of Tennessee does not give us our BEP money in the month of May at all. It comes in the month of June. Our growth money also comes in the month of June. And what they do is they wait to, to get all the information in before they do their final payments. So we have that, and then the amount that we receive from the city was not, did not make it in time for this report, so really about $3.5 million more is due in for this, so that'll be, of course, added in the next, next report. On the revenue side, we're, we're at 91.1% of the revenue collected, and that doesn't include the items I just mentioned to you, so that, that's, that's a, a good number for us to work from. And on the expenditure side, we're at 90%, so we're still below the 92% figure of where we are for the year. So we, we seem to be going along fine, finishing up the year on, on a good note. If anyone has any questions for me on the finance, I'd be glad to answer them. If not, I'll move on to the attendance report. Attendance report, we finished the year with 207 students over last year at this time. That is a 3% growth for the year, which is an excellent growth number. We are 157 students over what we had originally budgeted. We did not anticipate any kind of growth to speak of this coming year because of the way the economy was affecting us, and that was a 2.3% growth. So either way, we've, we've come out good on our growth numbers for this year. Our enrollment, as you can see, ended up with 700, I mean, I'm sorry, 7,004 students, including special ed, and then another 400 pre-K students on top of that. Our PTR ratio, pupil teacher ratio for K through 3, ended the year at 18.90, which again is a very excellent number. The state has a 20.0 average. On our 4th through 6th grade, we ended the year at 20.68 pupil teacher ratio, and the state has up to 25 on that one. Overall, school PTR for all grade configurations was 19.55. We are extremely consistent on our attendance percentage. We are again this month, for the second month in a row, 96%, which is very consistent, and that is an excellent benchmark number for us to work from. So, membership-wise, we did really good in our growth this year. We do anticipate additional growth next year, so if anyone has any questions on our attendance report, I'll be glad to answer those.
Ms. Rinear?
My question would have to do with the projected growth. What do you assume for next year?
We have built in a little over 170 additional students for next year. Based on, on the end-of-the-year report here, we're, it looks like we need 100, to reach the budget number, 172, I think, is what it works out to. So we're, we're doing pretty good as far as hitting that number. We do expect that additional growth coming in. And based on our early registration numbers that we received, and, you know, of course, that won't be finalized until we really get kids in school, but it, it does look like it's coming in pretty strong for us, so we're, we're real pleased with that as well.
Okay. No more questions for Ms. Anderson? Thank you, Ms. Anderson. It looks good.
The final report that you have is information about the annual agenda. If you see changes that you wish to have made there, if you'll let Ms. Ridley know, that would be terrific. And those are the reports and information.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. Other business? Is there anything, Doctor? Other business? Wonderful.
We don't meet in July.
No, we do not meet, unless it's an emergency. I don't foresee any. Business has been handled well. I think you can look forward to your Free July. I'm willing to go on any trips that anybody would like to send me on. I'm gay. Be more happy to go. If there's nothing else, we do not meet, and, now, let me back up on that. Do we have a policy session? Oh, oh, free month.
You're, you're going to miss us.
I will.
Even on your trips.
Even on your trips. I'll be here in town. Grandbabies visiting. Have the money. If there are no other business to bring to our attention, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and a second.